About Planning Commission meeting for Monday, January 22, 2024. Welcome to the new year. First item, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The second item is because it is a new year, we do need to select a chair and a vice chair for the year of 2024. We will need a motion. We will start with the chair.
Motion to recommend Kyle Reisner as Chair of the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
We have a, sorry, motion to recommend by Commissioner Bries, second by Commissioner Raykamp. Do you have any other nominations? Hearing none. Again, the motion is recommends myself, Kyle Reisner as Chair of the Planning Commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and I appreciate the continued support.
We appreciate you.
Second here, we do need another motion for vice chair.
Motion to recommend Brian Stiles as Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Bries, second by Commissioner Raykamp to recommend Brian Stiles as Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none. Again, the motion to recommend Brian Stiles as Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and congrats, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Third item for this evening is to approve the agenda, which includes approval of our minutes, three public hearings, new unfinished business, and some communication updates. I do have a motion to recommend with a slight adjustment. We would move item six, which is the at homes apartments preliminary plat and PUD before the public hearings, so switching items five and six around.
I approve the change.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reisner, second by Commissioner Stiles to approve the agenda with the amended change, again, switching items five and six. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Fourth item for this evening is to approve the minutes from our previous meeting of December 12th, 12th, 2023. Any adjustments, edits, comments, clarifications?
Just a point of clarification, it says Commissioner Chair Stiles called to the order of the meeting when it also says Commissioner President's were Reisner. So I assume that planning, that director, that Reisner called the order.
Good pickup. Yeah, so first item there, call to order, Commissioner Chair Reisner called to order as the adjustment. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the amendment of Commissioner Reiser over Stiles on the call to order. Any other adjustments? Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Reisner, second by Commissioner Bulleye to approve the minutes with the slight adjustments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and we will now move on to, again, this was previously item six, it is now item five, the new and unfinished business for at home apartments, the preliminary plat and PUD, and we'll hear from Nathan.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. So this item should seem familiar to you. This is the Lake Elmo Townhomes project that is being proposed by At Home Apartments. The developer is here this evening. So as a refresher for us, the project here is a 48-unit, 14-building, attached, single-family townhome development. This is a preliminary plat and planned unit development request in front of the city currently. I'm going to buzz through some of these land use things because we've talked about them at a previous meeting, but I can absolutely speak to this stuff to a little bit more detail should you have questions. So this is a property that is just over seven and a half acres. There are no wetlands. The guidance is village mixed-use district in the comprehensive plan and has corresponding zoning. You can see the zoning map here on the screen now and the right there. So as a refresher, the site plan is on the screen now. There was some changes, very minor, that I can talk to that have been made since the last meeting, very, very similar layout, some very minor changes. So to talk a little bit about planned unit developments, there are some minimum criteria that have to be met, which this project does meet. There are identified objectives that projects must also meet. Preliminary plat reviews include a number of different elements, including land use that we've discussed, bulk standards, tree preservation and landscaping, grading, et cetera. We also look at the flexibility that's being granted for projects. In this case, we're looking at now three requests, well, two, potentially three, and we'll talk about that potential third one in a little bit more detail. So number one is the multiple buildings on one lot, so that's multiple principal buildings. We have landscaping, screening, flexibility requests that we'll talk about. And then the third one is a possible request or solution to the encroachment issue, which would be a front yard setback flexibility request. So here's the preliminary plat. You can see there are two blocks and one outlot, so those are the colors teal and then blue on the screen, so block one and two, and then an outlot for stormwater. The project meets the city's bulk standards for this zoning district because they have been able to have multiple buildings on one property. And you'll see the minimum front yard setback for buildings from the building to the right-of-way, that is 25 feet, and I think that we can discuss possible deviation to that particular standard. So just to provide a little bit more of an overview to the design, we have a design standards manual, and we've reviewed this proposal against it. You can see the six-unit building on the screen now. You can see the four- and two-unit buildings on the screen here. Generally speaking, all of these buildings and the layout of them and the landscaping, some of the site elements, those are all generally consistent with the city's design Parkland dedication is required from this project because it will create a demand on the city's park system. That would be a 10% requirement, and since it's not in a park search area for a neighborhood park, cash-in-lou is recommended. So now we're going to get into some of the new information here. So the applicant did have their engineer provide a trip generation study. This was appended to the staff report for your review. I'm just going to cover a couple details that I thought were pertinent from this report. Number one is the development, which has 48 units. These are considered single-family attached housing by the ITE manual, which is the manual used for these estimates. Those 48 units would cause on a weekday, which is when we tend to have the highest number of trips for residential uses, 346 trips throughout that 24-hour period. So that's over that whole period, and so when you look at the highest peaks of that, those trips coming in and out, we're looking at estimated AM peak of 23 units or 23 vehicles or trips in and out, and in the evening, 27. So that's roughly one trip every two or more minutes. So the applicant did redesign, do some redesigning of the site, and really, the primary change was that road width reduction that we discussed at our last meeting as a possible way to work around some of those issues we identified. The applicant was able to reduce the right-of-way width of these cul-de-sacs from 66 to 60 feet in width, and so they bought themselves six extra feet of room. The width reduction meant that they pulled those buildings north of the street, we'll call it Street A. It's Woodhelm on this diagram, but we'll just call it Street A for now. They were able to bring those buildings closer to the street and create more space on the north and the east property boundaries, looking at block two here. It's worth noting that that width reduction is on both blocks. So there's a six-foot reduction in right-of-way width and a four-foot reduction in the road width, that's from curb base to curb base. With respect to the proximity of those patios to the eastern property boundary, or more specifically, that storm sewer line, the applicant was able to create a distance of 11 feet between the edge of those patios to the storm sewer line. That's drain tile, and then those patios are still encroaching four feet into the easement area, and we can talk about some options that we have on that note. First, I did want to talk a little bit about tree preservation and landscaping. So there are a number of trees on the site. Most of them are trees that aren't identified by the code as significant trees, and those significant trees are the ones that are restored through the tree preservation plan. So the applicant would remove 313 caliper inches of trees. They are able to save eight of them, and specifically with some of the extra room they have on the north side of the site, they were able to save, if I can get the cursor to show up, a few of those nicer evergreen trees on the northeast corner. So in total, 27 trees, tree plantings will be required to make up for the removals. I would note also that the landscape architect has not reviewed the latest tree preservation plan, and so their approval of those plans should be considered a recommended condition of an approval. So here's just an overview of the landscaping plan. You can see that there have been, specifically, I'm talking about block two, which is the eastern block. Get the cursor to show up again. So there are a significant number greater of plantings that have been shown here along the shared property boundary that are proposed by the applicant. So really, they are getting at the screening requirement in city code. Again, as mentioned, the landscape architect hasn't reviewed these plans yet in their entirety. However, this is a notable, I guess, improvement or addition to those plantings that were previously proposed. Keep in mind that in order to fully comply with the city's standards on that block two or the east parcel, there was anticipated a need for a fence. It still might be the case after the landscape architect's review that a fence may be the way to hit that 90% opacity. However, there are a significant number greater trees now. And to illustrate this, the applicant did provide an elevation of the screening. This came in recently, so it wasn't able to put in your packet for your review. However, what this is showing is on the top, this is just of that eastern parcel, and it's showing the tree plantings, including some of those existing trees that are in that boulevard south of Sunflower Lane. It's a look down south at this development, at the kind of initial development conditions on the top picture, and then on the bottom picture, illustrating what tree growth is going to do, really to add to the nature of the screening that's being proposed here. So taller trees and fuller canopies will result in more screening. So with respect to screening, the city has a few options here. The applicant is, as I mentioned, requesting flexibility to the screening standards through this PUD process. The city can approve what it is seen, or at least what's seen with the landscape architect's approval. It can conditionally approve a PUD deviation, so potentially with changes as a result of a discussion you might have here this evening, or the city could deny a deviation and require the developer to redo this screening plan and add the fencing or whatever is needed to hit the screening requirement. I guess I'll just, I'll mention my recommendations to you at the end here in terms of what seems to be reasonable from staff's perspective. On the easement issue, we did have, and obviously identified at the last meeting, a storm sewer that's pretty close to where those patios used to be. With the six-foot difference, they were able to get those patios a good deal further away from that storm sewer line, so now they're 11 feet. This is, however, still within the city's easement area. The easement is necessarily, has to be, per the city's policy, 15 feet centered upon that storm sewer line, so it's 30 feet in width altogether. So it is difficult to move that storm sewer any further to the east because then the easement would have to be on the neighbor's parcel. So that leaves us with some options here. The city could just deny any encroachment. As I mentioned, those patios are four feet into that easement area and require that the developer redesign this plan or the footprint of this building or the patios. The city can permit the deviation to the front yard setback. So in this case, what the city can consider is because those patios are only four feet over, and we have a 25-foot setback between the front of those buildings and the right-of-way line, which is right at the sidewalk, we can reduce that front yard setback from 25 to 21 feet, allow for the building to move a little bit further to the west, get those patios out of the encroachment area, and still keep enough room for parking, which is necessary in those front, those driveways. So the other, the third option is to do an encroachment agreement, but I would mention that this is not something that has been suggested by Public Works or engineering. And lastly, it is possible to relocate the storm sewer, but again, it's difficult to kind of go away from our easement policy over those storm sewers. So it seems to me that option two is reasonable, again, because it preserves the ability for those residents or their visitors to park in that driveway. So just a refresher for everyone on the staff comments previously, the city engineer has had an opportunity to review the plans that were originally submitted. There are some revisions required through the engineer's comments to those plans. Some of those are reflected in the revised plans that we've received. On the easement issue, the city engineer advises that no encroachment is allowed or should be allowed in the easement area. A sidewalk is being provided by the developer. North of this development, I would remind you, connecting to an existing sidewalk terminating on Sunflower Lane. The city's landscape architect will have to review the revised planting and screening plan. The city's fire chief mentioned that having these structures, most of them being sprinkled, is definitely a benefit to the city in terms of fire safety, and so that might be a rationale for allowing for the reduction in the road width. So one of the things that the city staff requested was a parking plan to illustrate how many on-street stalls would be left if we go from 32 to 28 feet wide. The city's policy is when we go down with that width reduction, we only allow parking on one side of the street. So the developer or the applicant has provided a parking plan illustrating where cars can park on the street here or the cul-de-sac. So there are parking on lot, or block one, rather, on the north side and on the south side on block two. This is maximizing those stalls that would be available. There are a lot of driveways that intersect with these cul-de-sacs, so there aren't necessarily a lot more parking stalls that you would gain where you'd have parking on both sides of the street. So staff are recommending 13 conditions of approval should this move forward. These are to satisfy the engineering, landscape architect, and city's fire chief's memos in addition to some of those standard conditions that are provided for preliminary plats and I just wanted to touch on the water appropriations issue, just to say that we don't really have an update for you at this time on this particular issue, as you probably have seen in the news, and there's just not really anything to report for you news-wise at this time. So the city staff are recommending approval of this development. The city council, again, has not formally denied any development as a result of the water issue, so because of that, my suggestion to you is still a recommendation to approve. And then there are conditions, obviously, and findings that are provided for you in the staff report. So that is what I have formally prepared for you this evening. I'm happy to take questions, and I would note that the developer is here to speak to their request.
Nathan, question on the, I know the landscape architect has yet reviewed the most recent one. When we look at the planting of trees on the east side there with that easement, is there an effect? Correct me if I'm wrong, it looked like there were trees planted over that easement, over the sewer line, is that correct?
Yeah, so, let's see, I have a better picture here, let me find it. Here it is. So on the screen, you'll see that this is the landscaping plan in a little bit more detail. There's a lot going on in this particular plan with the contours, but one of the things that the applicant has been able to do is trying to avoid, oops, that storm sewer line. On the east property boundary, it does look like there are some trees there. I haven't gotten any comments from either Public Works, Engineering, or the landscape architect on the tree placement in those areas. We do obviously try to avoid location in areas where it will be an issue, like the bottom of swales or right over the storm sewer.
Okay, yeah, exactly, was my concern. Thank you. Additional questions?
Quick question for you, Nathan, you might not know the answer to this, but only some of the buildings are fire sprinkled?
Yeah, so my understanding initially was that all of them would be sprinkled. The city, or, sorry, the state building code requires that any building with three or more units is sprinkled, and so those twin homes, there are several of them, those wouldn't be required to get sprinkled, but it would, from having everything kind of have the same features, be kind of beneficial, and obviously for fire, it's a benefit.
Gotcha, thank you.
Who's responsible for this sidewalk?
The sidewalk is the adjacent property owners. So in this case, you have one organization or entity that owns these two blocks, so they would be responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalk.
And the sidewalk that goes north into Wildflower.
That is a city requirement, that stretch where it's kind of at that cul-de-sac.
It's a city requirement, but who's maintaining it?
The city.
The city will.
Yep, yep.
Additional questions? Does the applicant wish to come up? Perfect, thank you. If you don't remind, don't mind remembering, don't mind reminding us your name for the record as well.
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for having me here again this evening. My name is Leanna Stefaniac. I am president of Real Estate and Development for At Home Apartments. I also serve as our company's general counsel. I just wanted to come up real quick and just provide a few of the highlights from the updates that we did since we were last here on December 11. As you recall, and as Nathan just went through with you, a couple of the conversations we had and comments that came from members of the public was about the screening and the landscaping, tree preservation. One of the things that we discussed, which is why we tabled at that meeting, was the opportunity to visit, reducing the street width from 32 feet down to 28 feet, to see what that could do to the overall site plan and how that could mitigate some of the concerns raised by our neighbors and allow us to better prepare ourselves for the request of the flexibility from the city's screening ordinance. As you all are aware, the current screening ordinance of the city is a fence of six feet tall with 90% opacity. The deviation that we're asking for is to do a vegetative screening rather than a fence for a variety of reasons. There are numerous environmental impacts to having trees versus a fence. It also visually looks better, it's a softer transition, if you will, between the various single-family homes and twin homes and townhomes. So what we did is, after the meeting on the 11th, excuse me, December 11th, we revised the site plan, as Nathan said, and we pulled the buildings to the south. With that street width, we were able to give ourselves six more feet on the property lines. We're taking the right-of-way down from 66 feet down to 60 feet. So with that, instead of reserving all, or removing all the trees on that north property line on the east parcel, we're able to save eight, and then that additional space allowed us to include additional plantings. We went from what our original plan was, which was 26 deciduous and evergreen trees, we now have 40. So we almost were able to double the original plantings that we prepared, that we showed you back on December 11th to where we are now, and we were able to upsize many of those evergreens from the required six feet, the city code, we can bring in 10 feet, and so that gives more of an immediate screening impact, because one of the concerns raised by some of the neighbors was that, great, you're going to plant more now, but they're still going to be little, and we're not going to get that benefit from the screening. That's why we went from the six feet to 10 feet. So we think, and we'll wait to hear from the city's landscape architect, with the existing trees on Sunflower right now that is in the boulevard there, plus the 40 trees that we're planting in and the eight reserved, we do think that we've reached that 90% opacity with the vegetative screening, and we do think it's a benefit for everyone. I understand that the landscape architect is still reviewing, but I wanted to kind of give you those highlights, because I think it's important to know how much did change and to the benefit of everyone. 26 to 40, saving eight trees, six feet to 10 feet. So that street width reduction really did benefit not only our site, but it does add a benefit, I think, to the neighborhood as a whole, and hopefully we mitigated some of our neighbors' concerns who directly live on Sunflower, who would be facing that tree line. The parking diagram, we did provide that to show what the parking, on-street parking will be with that street width reduction. I just wanted to remind everybody that with each unit, they're getting four parking stalls, they have two-car garage stalls, plus two cars can fit in the driveway. So for 48 units, that's 192 off-street parking for our residents in our two neighborhoods, plus then the additional 15 on-street. With any event or guest, you know, that may be visiting, we do think that that's ample parking, knowing that our residents can't use their garage for storage or anything like that, our leases prohibit that, so that is for true parking. So I just wanted to explain that parking diagram, since that was a little bit different than we had to do before when it was 32 feet versus 28 feet. A couple of other, excuse me, a couple of other things I just wanted to touch on. With the patio encroachment, there are a couple of options that was laid out before you with the city planner's presentation. We still would really like to find a way to compromise and get the patios in those four units, or, excuse me, five units, on the east parcel, units 13 to 18. Having a patio in a backyard really does add value for the residents that will be coming in there, and it'll allow them to enjoy their home the same way that their neighbors within the community will be able to have. It's my understanding, the encroachment agreement is not, you know, the ideal method. I think there has been some precedent with the city to allow an encroachment when we're 10 feet from the stormwater. We are 11 feet here, so there's some precedence for that, but we're willing to work with whatever, you know, with what was suggested, the city's option to reduce the front yard setback, or if there's an option to maybe look at shrinking the easement area from 30 feet to 25 feet, just to gain those four feet. The encroachment agreement is something we're still willing to do as well. One of the concerns of the encroachment agreement was the disruption to the residents, right? But we're the property owner, it will still be owned by our group, At Home Apartments, and yes, our residents will be in there, but if there were ever a need to get into their area and their patios were impacted, that would be for us to solve, not the city to solve. Whether we're giving our renters a concession or we're doing something for them to appease for their interruption, I think there was a concern among staff that that would be a city issue to deal with, but that's our issue to deal with, because we are the property owner and we would have to serve our customers in the best way. So just to kind of explain the rationale behind the encroachment agreement and why we still think that might be a viable option, but as the staff report showed, there's four different ways we could, or three different ways we could still maintain those patios and they can maintain their value, not only for us, but for our future residents. And then, yeah, I think, I think that's all I really wanted to highlight. I mean, they were minor changes, but I think those minor changes did really improve the site overall, and I just, you know, I hope that this time that we took to revise the plans and really listen to our neighbors shows, you know, that we are committed to being good neighbors, we are committed to being good stewards of this community, we want to work within the city code, we're just a few minor deviations to our plan. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer, otherwise I can sit back down.
Regarding the patios.
Yes.
The last meeting, you had indicated some willingness to maybe do different type of patios on those, that...
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely. Whether we do just, you know, a patio slab, or we do kind of tiles that are easier to kind of lift out, pavers, if you will, the pavers are obviously easier for us to lift out and replace. out and replace than jacking up a whole concrete pad, but design standards are, we can be very flexible on that. So there's still options for us on the design side, in addition to what has already been presented from the city's standpoint.
Thank you.
Yep.
Additional questions? Okay, perfect. Thanks, Nathan.
All right, thank you.
Much appreciated. All right, and for commissioners, this is not a public hearing, though we do have a couple residents that would prefer to speak, so we'll make an exception to allow public comment at this time, also taken in the record for city council to be able to hear. I have three listed up in here, so for that as a reminder, you'll have up to six minutes to speak. Again, it's your opportunity to say what you would like to say, it is not a forum for back-and-forth communication, or questions to be answered. I'll give you a one-minute countdown if you're coming up on time, and then at six minutes, not to be rude, but I'll cut you off. All right, first up, in no particular order, I have Don. And as a reminder, just name and address for the record as well, and as close as you can, you can move the mics a little bit, just to make sure everybody can hear for you.
I'm Don Place, I live at 4010 Monarch Lane North, though my house actually goes along Sunflower. And I'm here to talk on behalf of the residents along Sunflower, the northern border of the development. And I'd like to start out with thanking the At Home Apartments team and staff for working with At Home Apartments team to address some of the issues that we had talked about before, and the big issue was the screening, the barrier between the houses along Sunflower and the new development. And we had suggested that shrinking the street down from 32 to 28 seemed like a great idea, and from hearing Leanna's results, that would allow not only eight trees, but, you know, a whole bunch more plantings, taller trees, which I think goes a long way to resolving our concerns. Now, so we're asking for your support for the reduction of the street width to allow that. If that weren't to happen, we would say, hey, we need a stronger barrier, we would need that fence, but our, the residents' feeling is that fence really isn't the attractive way to go, we'd much rather have a more solid and taller natural barrier. So if the street width reduction accomplishes that, and it seems to, we really would hope you would approve that street width reduction for that purpose. The other thing I had mentioned when I talked last time in December was that we're really looking forward to the new concrete sidewalk on the west side of Wildflower. I walked here tonight, as I usually do when I go downtown, and fortunately, we didn't have much snow, and I was able to walk on the Batumina side. If we'd had more snow, I'd have been walking right down the middle of the street like I did last year. We really want that sidewalk connected all the way up to the Sunflower, Wildflower sidewalk, and it needs to be maintained by the city. And if it's agreed to, that's wonderful, our experience is that that's not automatic. So please do lobby for that maintenance, for snow removal on the new sidewalk. Thank you very much, and thank you, At Home Apartments, they work very closely with us, listen to us, and we appreciate it.
Thanks, Don, much appreciated. Next up, I have Jolene.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jolene Rousher, I live at 11465 Wildflower Drive North. And I'm here tonight because I'm concerned that our city isn't taking care of the problem that was mentioned at the last planning commission meeting, that was water, we just briefly talked about that just now. No one knew whether or not at that meeting if our water shortage would affect the building of At Home Apartments. Right now, our city is in a legal lawsuit with the DNR, Wiper Lake, and no one knows when or how this will be resolved. In the last few years, we've had a watering ban, and it will continue into this year. As citizens, we don't understand how the city can build and expand without making sure its current citizens are taken care of, and our water needs are met now and into the future. Another issue is the quality of our water. On February 20th, 2018, there was a settlement with 3M for $850 million for the state of Minnesota. Our neighbors to the south of us, that would be Woodbury and Cottage Grove, have taken action to get grants from the state with this money from the 3M settlement, to install water treatment plants to purify their community's drinking water. Our city last summer had a shortage of water at the end of each week, and chose to use a contaminated well that is filled with fresh, filled with fresh water every Friday, and dispersed this water throughout the whole city. The 2023 summer issue of the Lake Elmo newsletter, The Source, said the city's well number two is to exceed the regulatory levels of PFAs, so the city decided not to take this well out of the, decided to take this well out of the rotation. But this was a well that they were using every week last year, and our city has three working wells, and number two is contaminated. My hope is this, the city will share with its residents how they're going to make sure we have enough water now and for in the future, and how we're going to grow our city responsibly. Number two, I hope that you, the planning commission, will be having a meeting in the near future as to where we will be building a modern, comprehensive water treatment plant in the city of Lake Elmo. Everyone here needs and deserves the cleanest water for us to drink, and so I hope that you will really consider looking at that with the city and the mayor, to make sure that we get something that our neighbors to the south of us are taking care of for their citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, Jolene, much appreciated. And the last one I have here is Brian.
Good evening, my name is Brian Sorensen, and I live at 4032 Swallow Tail Lane in the Wildflower subdivision. I've attended several of these meetings over the past year, and one obvious issue continues to stand out, and that's the accelerated population growth of Lake Elmo is rapidly outstripping the infrastructure capabilities of our city. I think to maybe outline that point, and some facts I'm sure you guys are very familiar with, but the population of Lake Elmo was about 8,000 people in 2010. In 2020, it was 11,300, very, you know, modest growth. In '23, it was 13,750, and it's projected in five years, in 2028, to be 31,500. I mean, those are some staggering numbers. This commission continues to discuss growth and proper integration into existing neighborhoods, such as with the At Home Apartments complex, and you've listened to neighbors' concerns, and I think, you know, you've responded to several of those. However, there's been no discussion of infrastructure improvements. Growth, how do we support that growth? I'm requesting a formal response from this planning commission to the citizens of Lake Elmo concerning the following issues: water quality and quantity, two separate issues. What's the action plan to increase supply for current residents and to provide for future projected growth? We need a plan. What is the action plan to improve water quality related to PFAs? Jolene Rousher had mentioned some of those issues. I know you're exploring some possible solutions, such as the pilot plant that's running in the park in Lake Elmo, but temporary treatment of the number-two well, like Cottage Grove and Woodbury is doing, utilizing funds from the 3M settlement, would help us put that number-two well back into rotation. It would be a short-term fix, but it would be a bridge, and not having to blend polluted water, if you would, with other volumes to just get under the state levels. Another item is the status of the recent DNR offer to double Lake Elmo's current illegal water supply. I know the city council had a closed-door meeting on Tuesday of this week to discuss that issue. I don't know what plans are being made to inform residents of what the outcome of that is. And thirdly, action plans to replace groundwater wells with surface water from Mississippi and St. Croix River. I know that's the big point that DNR is pushing. They're concerned about the depletion of the groundwater table and its effect on other bodies of water in other communities, and I know that they would prefer the city to go to surface water use, which is obviously river use versus well. Another item, traffic congestion and safety issues at the numerous intersections that are being fed from the new subdivisions and planned housing developments. We need a comprehensive review of all traffic control measures throughout the community, obviously going from, you know, 8,000 population to over 30,000 population in a relatively short period of time. We might need more than two traffic lights on the street in the city. Lastly, as the name of this commission implies, its main function is to plan for the safety and needs of its citizens, not react to political pressures placed upon it by local and/or state politicians. The citizens of Lake Elmo urgently need your professional help to avoid an impending crisis in our community caused by runaway population growth and inadequate public infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, perfect, since we'll go back to the commission, we do have a, we'll need to entertain a motion before we go to discussion.
We need to close the public hearing?
It wasn't a public hearing.
Oh.
We did a sidebar.
Nevermind. I used to when I'd hear.
Public statements, not public hearings.
All right.
It's completely different.
Point of clarification before we go to the motion here, on the, the conditions of approval, you said there's 13 of them, where do we discuss the easement options?
So I have the easement options, they're in the staff report, but they're not in the conditions of approval, just to show you the easement options, they're called solutions or options here on this slide. So they're on this screen now, and I think on page six or seven of your staff report. So my suggestion as staff is to look at option number two, which is, again, to shrink that front yard setback a little bit, in order to fit the footprint of this building, including the extent of the patio.
Okay, does that need to be included as part of the motion, though, since it's not this? Is staff looking for this to be included in the recommendation, one way or the other?
That's a fair question. I think that would be beneficial, yes, to provide us with clear, clear recommendation for both easement issue and the landscaping request.
We don't have anyone from the city engineer to discuss the need to have a 15-foot setback from the center line of that stormline, stormwater line.
Yeah, so I did, I did ask about the option of relocating the stormline, and that's where that required...
I guess that's not my question, why do we need 15 feet? That's huge. So you're talking 30 feet total.
Yeah, I'm getting towards the answer here, so...
Sorry.
The city has a required 15-foot easement area, which is relatively wide, but there was not any interest in reducing that easement area on the part of the city.
All right, and I know I brought this up last time, but I think it came through when this easement was discussed with the planning commission about that 30-foot requirement, and it, our recommendation wasn't followed, but it, now homeowners can't put a fence within that 15-feet area.
So, just, chair and commissioners, my understanding is the city has a 10-foot practice of allowing encroachment agreements.
Yep.
10, 10 feet, so between 10 and 15 feet, you know, you're able to, in some cases, locate a fence. In this case, with new construction going in, and having this, have the opportunity to fully comply with the city's standards, we're seeing a suggestion from City Works, City Public Works and Engineering to just have these encroachments taken care of and not have to deal with encroachment agreements, or...
And I guess, what does the encroachment agreement say? What that basically says is that if something happens to that sewer line, the city's going to come in, rip up your property, and there's nothing you can do about it.
It's a license agreement, that, it's a legal tool, and effectively, it does say that if work is required in an easement area, it is at the cost or expense of the property owner, because they have their improvements within the city.
But we wouldn't give those to homeowners that wanted to put a fence, or within, within that 10 feet.
My understanding is that is the practice that the city has, yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you can, if you're a homeowner, you can apply for a variance to, for an encroachment agreement.
I don't know that a variance would necessarily apply, because that is a city policy and not like a city code, like a zoning standard. So I guess I would actually look towards the city planner, Sophia, to see if there's any guidance she has for you on this issue.
The 10-foot setback from a pipeline is in the fencing code, that was a recent update, I think we did last year, two years ago.
So you end up with, if you back to, if you're back up to your neighbor, and it gets too bigger, and a property rates issue for me, is that if you back up, you're looking at a house, and there is a storm drain running between the two houses, you can have your fence, you can't share a fence with your neighbor, and your neighbor's going to have a fence 20 feet away, and you've got the dead area in between where the storm drain is. Right?
Correct.
Yeah, and the city is not going to agree to give you an encroachment agreement to put that fence any closer to share fence, because they're going to maintain that you need 20 feet back there. Even if you say, I'm going to put the fence, but if you want to rip it up, I'm okay with that, if something happens to the storm drain, the city won't, we won't allow the homeowner to do that. And I guess that gets to the same point as this, and going, if we don't allow private property owners to do an encroachment agreement, why would we allow anybody to do an encroachment agreement?
See what I'm saying?
Good point for this.
I don't know that that's correct, that the city wouldn't allow a resident to do an encroachment agreement. I'd have to go back in my notes, but I've been through this with a neighbor.
Okay.
Let's, let's hold it for discussion first, then, because this is a perfect point for it. To get to that point, let's get a motion on the table. Which I believe is on page 10, there's a, city staff provided recommendation. Oh, thank you.
Motion to recommend approval of the preliminary PUD plan and preliminary plat as requested by At Home Apartments for the subject property based on the findings of fact and recommending conditions of approval listed in the staff report, in addition to the encroachment issues, solutions, I should call them.
Second, most by Commissioner Reese, second by Commissioner Bulley, oh, sorry, Jeffrey. To recommend approval, do we want to start with?
Sure, I think it's awesome that the applicant has worked with the residents so well about their concerns, and has really done some due diligence, not like, oh, we'll take care of that later, they've gone back and done a new redesign. The application is one of the best I've ever seen, I think these are going to be some really nice-looking units that are going to be really, you know, done well for the community. Yes, there is issues about water, there are commissions working on setting up plans right now to send out RFPs for some of these water treatment issues. The infrastructure does have to come along, I agree with that as well, but I think this development is not going to be a huge impact to any of those things at this time. But yeah, my main thing is, if the residents, the neighbors are in support of it, I'm in support of it, too, and I think it'd be a great thing for our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Reese. Commissioner Jeffrey, anything else to add, special points?
Again, just to echo, good job working with the community, glad that we got some Too bad it took an extra month to get it back in front of us here, but, and it looks like there's still a couple of tricky issues to work through, but I have confidence that we'll get it handled, such as the driveway reduction, or that front, that front setback, I mean, for those who have a pickup truck, they're longer than 20 feet, so that's going to be a problem. Hope we can come up with an innovative solution, so...
I'll tag on to that, I think I am in favor of the recommendation here with the work that At Homes has done with the neighbors. The additional screening, we generally don't see developers willing to spend more to get bigger trees in, knowing the cost of trees, the bigger they are, the more expensive they are, plus the maintenance of those, which does help. I think, Don, you're the one who mentioned it as well, more natural look and feel to a lot of it. I think on the encroachment issue, the only point of hesitation for making a clear delineation on that one is what our landscape architect determines is what is capable is what our landscape architect determines is what is capable with those trees running near the sewer line itself. Completely agree, Jolene and Brian, about the infrastructure costs. I know that the city, as Commissioner Bree said, has, commission's working on the specific water issue as well. Absolute agreement that we need from, from City Council, the guidance, the structure of what we're going to do with the money that was awarded and how it's going to affect, because we all live here and we all want clean water as well. The infrastructure, as we know, you know, working with some of the city and county roads that we have in here, but we have to make this place safer for everybody, right? We want to bring more people into the village district itself. That's part of our long-term plan of the area. And I totally agree, Brian, if we don't start looking at the future planning now, we're going to be in a rough spot. Echo those comments to City Council as well. Additional comments from the commissioners?
One other comment I wanted to make, it's on the water situation. I know there's a lot of confusion as to what is causing the shortages. I was even told by one of the staff that there was no shortages, although there was a notice sent out last year that they almost had to take one of the water towers offline because the water level got too low in it. So a lot of mixed signals, I understand that. One thing I was told that was alarming though is that the water usage is set to be restricted to about 75 gallons per household, is that correct?
75 gallons per person per day, I think.
Per person, is that what it is? Okay, so you might not see those restrictions ever go away, was the point of, of that. We don't, at least I don't, I don't know what the plan is. The plan is to keep trying, so it's not a good plan. We, we hear you.
One thing that was made clear to me when I came on to the planning commission was that we have to look at things legally. We have to look at, you know, all, the whole, the whole picture. Could you just go over on the recommendation, the first part, the legal counsel has advised, just because that's part of what we have to do. We have to go legally, we have to, we have to take a good look at all this, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on all this, if you wouldn't mind, Nathan?
Yep, so the feedback that we've gotten in working with the city attorney on the water issue is the time to consider denial for new development because of the water issue is at the time of preliminary plat, and that is utilizing the city's subdivision ordinance for premature subdivisions. And so there is a specific code section in there that talks about water availability. And we have been advised by council that really, once the city utilizes that premature subdivision as a finding to deny a development, it needs to be consistent in applying that finding because if it's not, then that could create risk for obviously the community. So that has been the guidance that staff have received. And that is what, you know, we'll share with you, is that if the city does make that finding, then that does impact all future developments. You know, we've got a number of developments that are at some point in the process. So I think that is an important point, is you kind of consider the water issue as it relates to this project, but the others that are somewhere in that pipeline.
Yeah, so I will add a couple things. So on the website, we're trying to do a better job of putting on information that's relevant to the citizens concerning water. So if you go to our website under helpful hints, you'll find, under the tabs, is my water safe? You'll find a whole mess of different links concerning what our wells are testing at. You can get testing for your individual well. If you have a private well in the city, you can just ask, and the MPCA will test your water for PFAS. We're going to see some ramifications, especially in the East Metro, concerning the overall lowering limits of allowable limits for PFAS, down to four parts per trillion. Well number two is, you know, has been tested within these limits. It has, it has PFAS in it, but frankly, probably a lot of water has it in there. I doubt you'll have any water that's going to be 100% clean in Minnesota, frankly. And so we did use that for mixing. We have two separate grants that we're utilizing, one which is a design grant to design a GAC filter system for well number two, which is one up by a carriage station up there. So we're, we got money for engineering, so then we can apply to the grant for that $850 million three-year settlement to put a filter on there. And then in addition, we got a secondary planning grant that we're looking at. The population growth is predominantly down south of 10th Street, and so we're planning for a new well, well number six, along with a treatment plant for that. Again, following in lines with what we've seen from other municipalities around. So it has to be, it goes through the trustees that manage these $850 million. In addition, I have started, and we just had a kickoff meeting for the White Bear Lake DNR watershed area for the 10 municipalities. And so this is where, as Nate had said, we will be revisiting some of these issues where, what does surface water mean? And how do you get surface water? And what does that mean for water rates? What would that mean for utilities? And how does that stabilize the lake level in White Bear Lake? This is a $2 million grant that came from the legislators last year, and the report is due in 2027. And that will help guide future, what we're hoping is the bonding, the bonding year cycle of 2028 is what we would hope have some money from the legislators to help the East Metro water, people provide sustainable, long-term water somehow. So there isn't any, there's not a lot of answers to this. We do have a draft permit, you probably have read about it in the newspaper, from the DNR council, as you had mentioned, went into closed session, and I'm not at liberty to discuss what the negotiations with the DNR are about that. And as Nate had said, doing premature development citywide would also have, there'd have to be some risk assessments from a legal standpoint concerning, are you doing illegal taking? You know, if you basically deny without proper justification. So it's a very complicated issue concerning not only the Met Council, but the DNR permit, the watershed issue, then of course, the PFAS issue. So there's, there's like four balls that the city's juggling trying to do this, and we don't have any clear answers right now. But rest assured, we are working on this and we are not ignoring this issue. It's paramount on my daily task is to keep studying this issue and trying to guide at least the time I'm here, the best decisions we can make. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir, much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that helps as well, just knowing that there are plans in the works. At many of our planning commission meetings, we don't have the opportunity to get into the infrastructure as much as I know I would like to. But we do have joint meetings coming up with City Council, and obviously you've done a lot of work that are coming down the pike. So I'm actually looking forward to some of these issues that we are concerned about coming down the pike, and that's a good feeling, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Do you have any additional comments on the recommended motion?
I just want to clarify, I guess, with the water issue or denying the PUD based on water, is that the risk is, is that if we recommend denial of this, because that's what we do, is that therefore you create a precedence, and the illegal taking then is not allowing property owners to do what they want with their property based on the presumption that there isn't water.
It would be the preference of city staff for the planning commission not to deny based on premature development rationale or statutes. We would rather have that rest with the city council, just from a legal standpoint if that were to happen. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Clay.
We still, I mean, I know we're not here, but we still could, if we wanted to, hypothetically speaking, deny this, but not on reasons for, independent of water, correct?
You'd have to have your reasons justified, and Nate would have to develop the reasons for that because obviously you can only reject it for a certain legal reason. And that's beyond my level, he'd have to weigh in on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess just to add a little bit to that, the city's reviewing to a request right now a preliminary plat and a planning development. Staff would have to bring forward findings or work with the planning commission to articulate findings as to why a development should be denied. But I would reiterate to you that staff's recommendation at this point in time is, is to recommend approval based on the fact that the development is generally consistent with the city standards, especially given some of those more recent revisions.
I guess I don't like reducing the frontage from 25 to 21, just because I think you want to maintain, we want to maintain that within that city. I do like the idea of shrinking the route, though. That reduction makes sense to me.
So Chair and Commissioner, if I might ask, the, I am looking for a couple clarifying points from you this evening. One is that screening request that the developer has made, and we saw kind of that new planting plan. It seems that, I'm hearing that there's kind of general consensus to move forward with that as far as this recommendation goes. The other, the other clarifying point is the front yard setback reduction or what other method the city should look to remove the encroachment. So that is the other thing I'll be looking for.
I'll speak up first. Landscaping, yes, assuming landscape architect signs off on it. And then on the easement, I think it's, I don't know. I guess I hesitate just a little bit since we don't have sign off from that landscape architect, if that's going to affect any tree plantings, because if they come back and say you can't plant on that line, then they've got to move it up, then we would have to see a front yard setback in order to make it, I believe, is that correct?
So let's go to the planting plan and take a look at that. So if we're looking at those trees on the east boundary, moving the building closer to the street will create more room to install plantings. Those front yard plantings in front of that building, there should still be enough space if we were to move the building four feet to the west. So I don't think that it should impact necessarily the ability to install plantings. And perhaps if there are issues identified with the location, we have slightly more flexibility.
Okay. So then, yeah, I would agree with both recommendations there. The, assuming sign off from the landscape architect and then the front yard setback.
I'm okay with the front yard setback, reducing that, personally.
Anybody in dissent, does that provide enough clarity?
Is the front yard setback on the north, I guess we, can you pull that back up? Just so I'm clear on what I'm looking at.
Yeah, so I have a little zoomed in view here on this slide.
Units 13 through 18.
13 through 18 was the, just to, so that the patios wouldn't overhang the, or encroach on the easement?
Correct, yeah, Commission. So the units 13 through 18 are the only units that I would suggest that this deviation apply to. And specifically, it's to allow for those patios to be removed from the encroachment area.
Right, that, the movement, the reduction of the front yard setback has nothing to do with the landscaping, it has to do with the patios.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, it's with clearing up that encroachment, again, with the understanding that from engineering and public works perspective, that's, there's not many options back there. So this, this front yard setback seemed to be the best of those available options.
I'm opposed to this.
Why?
Why? Because I don't think that we should reduce that front yard setback as a standard.
It's not a standard, this is just an exception to allow for the patios to not encroach on the sewer line. If it was a standard, we would change the code.
So the 25 feet isn't code?
It is code.
Yeah.
We're not changing the standard, it's a various request in a sense for a single project.
Quite frankly, I think we're making good use of the property, and I don't, I mean, looking at this, I don't see what else we could do. I, there are, there is, I think this is the best solution that we could do. So I, I am in favor of it. I, I mean, we, it gets tricky sometimes when you're in these things, and it gets tricky to make exceptions, I understand that. But this is a reasonable plan, and it's making use of what's there, and therefore I am in support.
A deviation seems more in line with, with other variances that we've, we've allowed versus an encroachment agreement, which is not. And is undefined because we don't have full definition of it.
What would be your solution, Commissioner Raykamp?
I would prefer the encroachment agreement. They, you know, it's a patio, it's small, it can come and go, it's not the massing of housing units.
Also a good option, but Public Works has said that they don't like that option.
Right. But if you're going to rip up, it's a patio, it's not, it's not as permanent as the structure of a house or a building that's closer to the street.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there is no guarantee that even if we allow this deviation, the patio still may need to be taken up.
Right.
There is no guarantee on that, I would think everyone.
Well, if they're not in the encroachment anymore, then they shouldn't ever be touched. Right?
Well, possibly.
So for clarity's sake here, the motion on the table is to recommend approval based off the facts and findings with the additional recommendations of the, I just, I thought I saw it. Approval of the recommended screening as well as a front yard setback deviation from 25 to 21.
Correct. My motion was for one of the solutions. Didn't have to be this, you know, decrease in the setback, but if.
City Stop's looking for.
Mr. First is looking for an answer, then I would be in favor of the setback, reduced setback.
Okay. Do we have any additional discussion on this?
Are you good? I mean, do we need to redo it, or are we?
No, I think that we've got as clear as, of feedback as we need.
Thank you?
We're doing well.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, then we will go ahead and move to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes with Commissioner Raykamp in the dissent. Thank you, everybody, for your diligent work on that one. Anybody in the audience, you are welcome to stay. We'll also give a moment if you prefer to head out for this evening. All right, we are now moving to item six of this, for this evening, which are our public hearings. And if I was reading correctly, public item 5A is going to be, is not part of this evening's agenda, correct?
Correct, Chair. So what happened here is we were planning to present that item to you this evening. We actually did publish a public hearing notice for that particular item. And since we, we sent the notice out, the developer asked for an extension for a little bit more time to get some clarity on a couple issues, not limited to water. And so they have requested a 90-day extension, which puts them out until the end of May. We do anticipate bringing this item back to the planning commission around April, one of those two meetings in April. But we do need a motion from you all to table this item and move that public hearing to a future meeting.
Motion to table the Kramer Lake CPA.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Raykamp, second by Commissioner Jeffrey, to table the Kramer Lake Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and the item is tabled for a future meeting.
Probably had some encroachment issues he needed to figure out.
We'll move to item 6B, the 8012 Hill Trail variance. We'll hear from Sophia first. We'll move to item 6B, the 8012 Hill Trail variance. We'll hear from Sophia first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant for tonight's variance is Daniel and Ann Stoud. Again, the property is located at 812 Hill Trail. The property is currently zoned rural single family with a shoreline overlay and guided in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for Rural Single Family. This application comes before you tonight because the site was previously granted a variance in 2022 for 19.1% impervious surface, but due to delays with the builder, the variance has since expired since work was not commenced within that one-year timeframe. The request before you tonight is to allow 19% impervious surface where 15% is required. Moving on to the site plan, I have an elevation view and survey of the proposed addition. The maximum impervious surface within the Shoreland District for unsued lots is 15%. The property is currently legal nonconforming at 17.2%. The prior approval in 2022 was for 19.1%, and they are coming before you with less of a request than previously approved for 19% exactly. So this application was sent out for agency review. We received comments from the city engineer and fire department, and conditions of approval have been added to address those memo comments. The Valley Branch indicated that no permit would be required for the scope of work, and the DNR did not provide comments. And then a public hearing was sent out to surrounding property owners on January 10th and published in the local paper on January 12th. Staff has not received any public comment at this time. So we're viewing the variance criteria. The criteria reasoning has not changed since the last review. To summarize those practical difficulties would be the need for functional garage and adequate living space, unique circumstances. Essentially, the applicant is not responsible for the existing layout and construction of the home, and they have tried other alternatives to avoid a variance, to no less. Character of locality is that the proposed addition would be consistent with adjacent properties in the principal structure and then adjacent properties in traffic. The proposed house with the addition would still be setback a far distance from neighbors, and this is a heavily vegetated area, so there would still be a natural screening buffer. So there are eight recommended conditions for you. The first one is outlining what the variance is for. The second one is that standard 12-month expiration. Three through five are engineering recommendations. Six is to ensure it meets character of locality, that it is consistent with the principal structure. And seven and eight are to address the fire comments. And with that, I have a recommended motion for you, and the applicant is here tonight, if you have any questions for them.
All right. Any questions? Perfect. Would the applicant like to come up and speak at all? And as a reminder, if you just name and address, please, for the record.
Sure. I'm Ann Stoud, and this is my husband, Dan Stoud. We live at 8012 Hill Trail North. You may recognize us from when we were here a year and a half ago with the same request. Nothing's changed as far as what we need to do. We still have too many kids, not enough bedrooms, not enough garage space. We just weren't quite able to get the plan solidified. We ended up switching builders. It's not this builder that's here tonight that caused the delay. It was our previous builder. So the switch and then the revamp of the plan, is why we just weren't able to stick with that one-year deadline, and the previous resolution required us to stick to that exact plan. And we changed it so that it was, just made more sense and was more cost-effective. But we're still just looking to add bedrooms and garage space. We still want to stay where we're at. We love our house. We have history there. We bought it from Dan's parents. His mom passed away a couple years later, so we really like that we feel her presence there. We also are just trying to set ourselves up. We have a daughter with special needs, and we want to make sure that she can stay under our roof forever if need be. So the new addition allows us to build a bedroom for her that she can stay in and that we can just continue to use as our, as our family has been, just with a little bit more space. As we're set up now, the master, other than the master bedroom, we've got two other bedrooms, but four kids. So we, a year and a half ago when we were here, we told you we were sharing a bedroom with our three and four-year-old. Now they're five and six, but they're still in our room, and we'd love to get them out, and I'm sure they would, too. So any questions for us?
All right. Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
All right. Back to the Commissioners. This is a public hearing, so we will need a motion to open.
Move to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Stiles, second by Commissioner Breeze to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is now open at 8:14 PM. No public comments. Perfect. We will go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Breeze, second by Commissioner Stiles to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously, and public hearing is now closed at 8:15 PM. There is a motion we can entertain, recommended by city staff, to start discussion.
Move to recommend approval of the request with conditions from Danielle and Ann Stoud for a variance to allow an impervious surface coverage of 19% at 8012 Hill Trail North.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Breeze, second by Commissioner Stiles to move to recommend approval. We'll start discussion. Commissioner Breeze?
If 19.1 was okay, 19's better.
I concur. I remember this last time, so there was nothing from before, so I'm good with it.
Additional?
Yeah, it looks like all the powers that be have looked it over, have read the report. Everything looks good. Dan's a good guy, so send it through.
All right. Easy enough. Much appreciated. Again, motion on the table is move to recommend approval. All those in favor of the recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, and this will go to council. Do we have a date?
February 6.
February 6. Perfect. That concludes item 6B for this evening. And same thing, if you guys want to stay, you can. If you want to take off, I mean, it's a little more fun out there, but...
I don't know.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right. With that, we'll move on to our final public hearing for this evening. This is item 6C. Again, we'll hear from city planners. Sophia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there are six city code sections before you tonight, which are under review. The intent of these changes is for housekeeping consistency, and typically these are done on an annual basis. This is a part of your Planning Commission work plan. So we'll dive into each section. The first section is 10512110B1. The intent of these amendments is to account for rental townhomes, which is a housing type that we are seeing more frequently, and then to eliminate conflicts with the design standards manual. So in here, there is a minor change to multifamily residential to accommodate one or more shared entrances. So currently, it's defined by one entrance. This would be one or more to account for larger buildings. And then the meat of this amendment would be single family and attached or townhomes, so including townhomes in that definition. Striking the current definition, and the new one would read as follows, means a building containing independent dwelling units adjacently attached to each other, each with a separate exterior entrance at the ground floor. Single family attached must contain more than two units, but not exceed eight total units. Units may be on the same or separate lots. Moving on to the second amendment, 1051210506B, these are to clarify that the greater restriction between conflicting provisions is the guiding standard. That is outlined in city code section 1.04.030, and we would just be adding the language whichever is greater to the side yard setback in the OP PUD district, which is currently rates 10 feet, 15 feet or 10% of lot width. So just a clarifying item there. The third change is to 10512790, specifically to the VMX zoning district, the front yard setback. The references for multifamily and non-residential units don't actually exist, so we would just be striking that language since it is irrelevant and replacing it with the 25-foot setback, which is a standard in the VMX already, and then the other village Moving on to terms defined, so this one pretty much mimics the first section that we reviewed. It is updating housing language. So this one has a little bit more of a facelift. We'd be adding two-family, which would be absorbed from the third definition, which is a building on a single lot or adjacent lots containing two dwelling units either side by side or stacked vertically. Again, the third definition that is removed is absorbed into the first definition. The fourth one, removing multiple to multifamily, and then that accounting for more than one shared entrance. And then dwelling, single family attached, would be removed and absorbed into dwelling, single family attached or townhomes, and that definition would be the same one that I read previously. So that's creating consistency between the zoning definitions and then the general terms section of city code. Moving on to the next amendment, 10512480B E and G. So the first one is to subsection three, no more than 25% of one taxonomic genus. So this would be creating more resilient plantings. This is a recommendation from our landscape architect. No plantings may be placed in the drainage utility easement unless approved by the public works director. This is another recommendation from our landscape architect and public works director. A cleanup to planning director, which would be replaced with community development director, outlining road right of way instead of public streets, sidewalks, or paths. And the last one is putting a space between a long and side. Oh, sorry, two more. Multistep, adding that into the maintenance and installation requirements, and then replacing installation with acceptance. Moving on to the final section, 10512260, permit certificates and licenses. This is to articulate the city's policy for when a grading and site improvement agreement is required. So we'd be adding language to grading agreements, which would be required for non-single-family or non-residential projects, if it is not associated with a development agreement or site improvement agreement. And then we'd be adding section G, which is a site improvement agreement, and those would be required when public improvements are installed in a project. So essentially, a project would either have a development agreement, grading agreement, or site improvement agreement. And a public hearing was published in the local paper on January 31st, and we have not received any public comment at this time. So with that, I can stand for questions.
Just one clarifying on the 1080110, the two-family or duplex. I know this sounds kind of weird, but we say, means a building on a single lot or adjacent lots containing two dwellings either side by side or stacked vertically. Would there ever be a situation where it's, and I guess we could consider this be the side, but it's, the backs are connected? Like if there was two joint, sorry, two streets, they're in the middle, so the front doors are facing two separate streets. So technically, it's like the rear of the houses are connected? Do we still consider that side?
Still be side by side.
Okay.
Correct. It would just be a corner lot.
Okay. I was gonna say, I can't think of where we would hit it, but as long as that's encompassing. Thank you. Additional questions?
I got a question on the side yard change, 15 feet or 10%, whichever is greater.
Yes.
Can you give me a little background about where that came from? I mean, I understand we should define which one we're choosing, but, and I guess I wasn't aware of this, we've got a 500-foot wide lot. I don't know why we have to increase the side yard setbacks to 50 feet from 15.
So this is in the open space code, which is typically larger lots, more open space within the development.
Okay.
And the conflicting provisions ordinance is already in place, which is whichever is more restrictive already applies. So this is more or less transparency for those applicants. So when they develop plans, they're not searching through different code sections. It's all in one place.
We're not changing, I mean, again, with all of this language, we're just defining it and clarifying it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. This is a public hearing, so again, we'll need a motion to open.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jeffrey, second by Commissioner Stiles to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Public hearing is open at 8:24 PM. Confirming there is nobody in the audience, no public comments were received. So we can go ahead and entertain a motion to close.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner, was that Raykamp?
Yes.
Commissioner Raykamp to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Public hearing is now closed at 8:24 PM. We do have a motion in our packet, I believe. Last page, page 10.
Motion to recommend approval of the proposed text amendments as presented by staff.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Raykamp, second by Commissioner Jeffrey to recommend approval of the proposed text amendments. Any discussion?
Clarification is good.
Get ahead of the spring cleaning. Perfect. Without any further discussion, again, the motion on the table is recommend approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, which concludes item six for this evening, which were our public hearings. We'll move on to item seven, which are communications and updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recently, the city hired a planning assistant. The planning assistant has created educational items on the city website under the planning department page, so people are more aware of current projects and development patterns. So that is an update. That was also on your work plan for 2024. So that is a working document. We will update that as projects move in the queue and move out of the queue. City council updates. On January 2nd, the city council approved the Bridgewater Village Conditional Use Permit Comp Plan Amendment and Rezoning, and they tabled the preliminary plat until February 20th. The city council updates for January 16th. The Carmelite Non-conditional Use Permit was approved. The Conditional Use Permit Extension for Upper 33rd Street, that fourplex was approved, and the NYPD zoning text amendment was denied. Upcoming meetings, the Planning Commission is meeting February 12th. We have a joint session with the city council on February 13th, and that starts at 6:30, and then a meeting on February 26th.
Perfect. Is there anything we need to do to prepare or read ahead on the February 13th workshop, or is that going to be provided, kind of?
A packet will be posted a week ahead of time, and you'll be made aware of it.
Perfect. Awesome. With that, we have gotten to the end of our agenda. As always, much appreciate everybody coming out. Happy New Year. Thank you to city staff for hanging out late with us as well. And with that, we will go ahead and close the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, January 22nd at 8:27.